Good evening. I'd like to call the July 19, 2017 Board Meeting to order and remind everyone to please use your microphones when speaking and turn them off when finished. Thank you. Commissioners present are Commissioner Doan, Commissioner Duggan, Commissioner Bagnall, Commissioner -- where is this?
Oh, come on, you know me.
No, I'm confused here. Commissioner Burke and myself, Commissioner Schmidt. Next, we will have reports by the CEO and management staff.
We're going to do that now? Okay. Actually, the first order of business tonight is going to be the swearing in of our newly re-elected commissioners. So Debbie Werner will now administer the oath of office.
All right. Please, please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
Big Schmidt.
Jim Duggan.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
To faithfully discharge.
To faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Commissioner.
The duties of the Office of Commissioner.
Of the Tuauton Valley Water District.
Of the Tuauton Valley Water District.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And the laws of the State of Oregon.
And the laws of the State of Oregon.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
During the term of office to which I was elected.
During the term of office to which I was elected.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And while you're getting seated, I will introduce the safety minute for the evening, which will be presented by Matt Oglesby, the interim manager for our field operations group.
Good evening, President Schmidt and Commissioners. Tonight's safety moment is on water safety, taking steps to be safe around the water. Who doesn't love to have fun lazing by the pool on a hot summer day? It accidents happen. Nine people die from drowning every day. Second leading, and it's the second leading cause of death between the ages of five and 24. What can we do? Make water safety your priority. First, swim in lifeguard or supervised beaches and pools. Put up barriers around hot tubs, pools. Always swim with a buddy, never know what might happen. Keep an eye out for children and keep them at arm's length if possible. Learn proper safety or swimming and safety skills and wear a life jacket while boating because every second counts. The chain of drowning survival consists of these: recognizing the signs that someone's having trouble and shout for help. Rescue and remove the person from the water without putting yourself in danger. Ask someone to call emergency medical services and if you're alone, give two minutes of care, then call EMS. Begin rescue breathing and CPR as soon as possible and use an AED if available and get them transferred to care as soon as possible. But don't forget to have fun, all while being safe.
Thank you very much, Matt. Couple of updates for you. As you know, the city of Portland is currently evaluating options to treat the bull run supply for cryptosporidium. They had significant detections of the occurrence of cryptosporidium earlier this year, and so now they've been told by the Oregon Health Authority that it's appropriate to implement additional treatment. Portland's currently considering two different options for treatment: UV, ultraviolet light, which inactivates the cryptosporidium, and filtration, which would physically remove the cryptosporidium. As Portland's largest customer, TBWD was invited to provide public comments to the Portland Utility Board, or PUB, at their meeting last week. Based on the direction that you had provided me previously, I provided comments on behalf of TBWD that expressed our strong preference for a filtration option for the bull run supply. I provided several comments in terms of the, what we saw as benefits associated with filtration over UV, not the least of which was, of course, compliance with the long-term two rule for cryptosporidium treatment, but that would be the only thing that UV would do. In contrast, filtration would also result in improved reliability by allowing for additional drawdown of the bull run reservoirs, about a billion gallons of additional storage that could be used, as well as operation of the bull run supply during turbidity events, improved resilience in terms of recovery from any fires in the watershed, any landslides in the watershed, or of course, the potential for a Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake, improved water quality in terms of lowering disinfection byproducts. The filtration process actually removes some organic material that, when chlorinated, results in byproduct formation, so filtration would limit the formation of byproducts. It would also, one of my favorite challenges with bull run is every fall we get colored water. Filtration would very likely make that problem go away. And more than anything else, the filtration option, what from my perspective and what I had heard from the board essentially future-proofs the bull run supply to address future regulations that we don't know about at this time, future contaminants that we may or may not know about, and also addresses potential impacts associated with climate change that may not be foreseen for years. And so from that standpoint, I expressed that we see that Portland has really a unique opportunity to prepare for the future by implementing filtration now. Also interesting, at the PUB meeting, the Water Bureau distributed a three-page graphic summary of rate impacts, their rate impact analysis for what were only retail rates associated with the two options of filtration and UV. To date, as far as we know, they haven't done a rate impact analysis in terms of what those options would mean for wholesalers. So attending the PUB meeting for Portland was an interesting experience, only from the standpoint, pardon me, the Portland public did their very best to keep Portland weird. There were some very interesting and unusual comments, both in terms of content and how they were presented, but it really left me appreciating the professionalism of the TBWD board meetings and the TBWD staff. So I have expressed your concerns and presented them in writing as well. Moving on to a little happier topic, we've received another award. Last month, the Joint Water Commission received a communications award from the Pacific Northwest section of the American Waterworks Association, hence, award. The award was in recognition of the Joint Water Commission's work on developing a response plan for possible occurrence of harmful algal blooms in the Joint Water Commission's supplies. So while JWC hasn't experienced what would be considered a harmful algal bloom, the commission's staff, including support from TBWD's engineering and communications team, prepared the HAB response plan just in case it would be needed in the future. The plan identifies things like a monitoring plan, critical occurrence thresholds, treatment response, and customer communications. So TBWD is receiving the award as a partner in the Joint Water Commission. And finally, tonight, the department report in keeping with the district's mission to provide our community with quality water and customer service. Matt Oglesby will present the department report this evening.
Good evening again, President Schmidt and Commissioners. Tonight's presentation, conveyed by Mark, is presented by the Field Operations Department and should hopefully be one of your last presentations that you have to see on these Fireflies. So were the Fireflies the right decisions for TBWD? So the meter vans served their purpose and worked how we needed them for two, for over 20 years, but something had to be done. So after a lengthy selection process, it was decided to try something new. It was efficient, ergonomic, and something totally different. Unit 600 grid was purchased and placed into service in December 2014 as a pilot project. During that pilot project, it was identified that TBWD needed to, some infrastructure installed to charge said vehicle. So eight 240-volt charging stations were installed to accommodate future vehicles, which we received some tax credits that we can sell. As you can see here, we received a charging station tax credit as well as the electric vehicle tax credit, and construction was completed in June 2015. TBWD also owns a plug-in hybrid staff car that was estimated to get about 20 miles on all-electric mode to help get better mileage. So as you can see up here, the, our average MPG is 114 miles, and I did some calculations on, we've, it's a 2015, so we've had it for a couple of years now, so I did a one-year calculation. Cost us about $252 to drive 4,000 miles, which is actually pretty good, about half as much as a vehicle getting 20 miles per gallon running those same amounts. So some of the meter vans' inefficiencies were the maintenance on, in those last two years of life was costing TBWD a lot of money. The last biennium, we spent over $60,000 to keep those things on the road. On top of these, vans got awful gas mileage, as well as being circuit 1990 vehicles, they produced a lot of CO2. I did some quick calculations on the amount of CO2 that was spewed out those two years, about 38 and a half tons, and you can see that we got about nine miles per gallon driving those 40,000 miles. So per year, it cost us about $40,000 per year to operate those vehicles, maintenance and driving them. One efficient thing they did do, they sold fast at the auction last month, and we sold six of them and got almost $8,000 for them.
Pardon me, man?
Yeah.
Who would buy those?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. Just curious.
We, we got people inquiring about where to buy parts for them. We decided that's why we got rid of them, because we can't find parts.
I think they're, I think they're kind of cool.
Thank you.
We still own two of them.
Yeah, okay.
So we're not completely out of the meter van business, but we're trying to get there.
Yeah.
So some Firefly statistics. Maintenance costs have decreased significantly. Granted, the Fireflies are brand-new, but they're also all-electric, so they have a lot less moving parts, and electric motors are very efficient and dependable. So you can see the maintenance costs that we spent on them since the beginning, on all six of them, mostly is we converted a, one, the second one we bought, we bought it as a right-hand drive and it wasn't, didn't fit what the crews needed, so we converted it back to a center drive. That's what most of that maintenance cost is. So since December 2014, since we bought the first one, we've driven all of them in combined 14,000 miles, used up 5,200 kilowatt-hours of electricity. So the MPG on them are, MPG E on them was 93.2, but that should trend higher, as you can tell, the, the best and worst. The worst MPG is E is 64.5, which should trend up because that one's only got 400 miles on it. So the, I think the longer we have it, the better, the more efficient it will get. And we've used about $500 worth of electricity to drive those 15,000 miles. So in conclusion, I think Dale was innovative in pursuing an all-electric meter reading fleet and should produce environmental and cost savings in the long run. We successfully calibrate it. We worked with field customer service. I put that in there just to mess myself up. Anyway, we worked with field customer service, Fleet Department did, to find something that worked for both departments. We're going to save fuel in the long run, ergonomics of them are good, environmentally were a lot better than those old meter vans. Maintenance on them are next to nothing compared to the meter vans, and the time-saving that the crew has by not having to have their vehicle broke down all the time, great. So are there more vehicle, electric vehicles in our future? Possibly. The, as the years go by, the, the battery costs in these vehicles come down so much that they predict a 10, 15 years that electric vehicles will be about the same price as a combustion-powered vehicle, so. And right now, Fleet is evaluating, getting, filling that one last spot we have with a, another staff vehicle that is all-electric. So, does anyone have any questions?
If there are no questions, that concludes the CEO and management staff report for the evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Communications, reports of meetings attended. Commissioner Burke, would you like to start?
I would. I have two. I have tonight's meeting and the board retreat on July 10th, which I thought was incredibly useful.
Great.
Those are my two reports.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Since I missed the June meeting, I have several more meetings. On the 30th of May, I attended the kids' calendar judging. That was always, that's really always very entertaining. The creativity of the kids is wonderful. And on the 31st of May, I attended the budget committee meeting where we recommended that the board adopt the budget. On the 6th of June, I attended the board work session, and on the 10th, the board retreat, and then tonight's board meeting.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Duggan?
I also attended the board retreat on the 10th of July. On the 11th, I met with President Schmidt and Mark to discuss tonight's agenda and then tonight's meeting. That's all I have.
Well, let's see. My voice is holding together. On July 10th, I attended the board retreat. On the 13th, met with Commissioner Schmidt and Ben Mark concerning the Joint Water Commission and the Barney Joint Operating Commission meeting that was going to happen the next day. And I attended the July 14th Joint Water Commission, Barney Joint Operating Commission meeting, and then tonight's regular, regular meeting.
Thank you. I also attended the retreat and the Joint Water Commission pre-function function to discuss their agenda, and then the Joint Water Commission and tonight's meeting. Okay. Topics to be raised by commissioners. Do we have any topics to be raised by commissioners? None heard? Public comment? I have one public comment sheet from Mr. Harry Bodine.
If you have any interest in attending a public hearing, you've never been to one, it might be sort of interesting to see. This was the night it was supposed to happen, so the hearing's not tonight, but Ari's with us. Ari's a neighbor, he's 12-years-old, he and his two older brothers are enabling Winona and me to stay in our house. That's how critical this guy is, you know? Last Saturday morning, he was on my roof, and he's done about everything you can imagine from time to time. He's also a person who's, for someone his age, 12, he's really interested in a whole bunch of different subjects. So this is just sort of, this, his being here tonight sort of fits a pattern, and he's a great friend, and I'm very, very lucky to have him as a good friend. Now to my testimony. It will be brief. There is a rate increase coming, and I do support it. I think the, what we're getting for it is very tangible, a third major water source for the metro area, and a water system that we will own, this transmission system we will own, which I think is going to be very important going down the line and should be very beneficial for the people of the district well into the future, including one of my friends here is my age, which is about 70-years out, you know? Anyway, the other thing, just in passing, I've had a chance to attend several Beaverton City Council meetings in the last several months, and as the continuing saga, which is now entering year six, about lack of a urban service area agreement, and frankly, for this water line is concerned, this transmission line, I would be very, I think it would be a good recommendation, it would be my personal feeling, that the line now is owned by the district and the city of Hillsborough. That should never change. No third-party buy-ins down the line here, is my, that's my thought. Any questions? Otherwise, thank you very much.
Thank you, Harry. Nice to see you again. Young man, keep up. Okay, consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any item requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
A nice second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Commissioner Burke is now the board president. I'm turning over the role of presiding officer of this meeting to him.
So while there's a break in the action, I just want to congratulate, first of all, now President Burke. Congratulations. And for folks that are watching, the action that was taken under the consent agenda established new officer appointments that include Commissioner Bagnall as vice president, Commissioner Duggan as treasurer, Commissioner Schmidt as the secretary, and Commissioner Doan as the acting With that, Commissioner Burke, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Just getting my paper situated here. I'd like to begin by thanking Commissioner Schmidt for his excellent service. We have one-year terms as board officers, and this is not the first time that he has served in that role with distinction, so thank you very much, Commissioner Schmidt.
You also.
Yep. And so we will resume with the board meeting. We'll now go on to the business agenda. I don't see any blue sheets. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on items? Okay, very good. So now we will move to the item on our business agenda, consider approving the water rate process and schedule.
So as you know, we've completed the, the budget process, and that is now behind us, and that then is quickly followed by the rate development process, which we are now moving into. And so tonight is really the first opportunity for our CFO, Paul Matthews, to begin to roll out not only the potential proposed rates, but really the financials that go behind those rates, as well as the process and public involvement opportunities and schedule for that work that will occur over the next several weeks. So with that, take it away, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, President Burke and Commissioners. As Mark indicated, we have completed the budget process, and so the next step for us is to update the financial plan and look at rate alternatives. A lot of the information I'm going to present tonight, I've presented to you before, so I'll go through it pretty quickly, but this is really our first opportunity to do this in, in our meeting. We've got an agenda here, or an overview of what we want to talk about. First, I want to talk about the financial forecasting rate process, the process that we use here at the district. Want to talk about our public outreach plan. We've had quite a bit of change there, in part because of the recommendations from the rate advisory committee that testified to you in January of this year. We have several open houses to encourage the public to participate. Want to talk about that, as well as the comment period. Then I'll present the proposed rates and the adjustments that we are proposing for the biennium, and then go over a few next steps. So before I get into all the details, I want to brief you quickly on the district's financial, financial position. We talk about this often with you, but again, I want to get it out there in the public purview. First of all, the district ended the 2017, the 2015, 17 biennium in a very strong position, and we're starting the current biennium in a very strong position. Our available cash is strong. We have cash reserves that are available to pay for the capital projects that we're undertaking. We have strong revenue. We've had strong water sales revenue and growth in customer demand during the biennium, and so we're in a strong position there as well. Growth within the district is continuing, and that provides the system development charges, those one-time charges that we have for customers when they connect to the system, and that continues to be strong. Both the strong revenue and system development charges are contributing to the district's strong cash position. The last thing I want to mention is that we are debt-free, which provides the district a unique opportunity to write its bond covenants in a way that's advantageous for the district in the future. So we do have the process that we follow, and first is the, the budget process that we talked about, and you, of course, adopted the district's biennial budget last month at your regular board meeting. Part of that is to develop the financial plan that brings all those priorities together and finds the funding for them. It really combines the rate revenues, the operating expenses, the capital expenditures, the borrowing into one, into one plan that ensures the success for the district and makes sure the financial strategy is full and works. Once we have that financial plan in place, then we design the rates, and I'll be presenting up a proposal for you on rates tonight. And then the last item is actually delivering on those things, delivering on the district's mission. So out of the budget process, we had a couple of key priorities. I want to make it clear that the financial plan and the budget fully fund these priorities. First is the, continuing the Willamette Water Supply Project. So the rates that I'm presenting tonight and the proposal I have tonight will fully fund the needs of the Willamette Water Supply Program during the biennium. It also provides for strategic investment in the district's capital improvements here in the district, including, for example, the Grabhorn Reservoir that we've talked about, and other important things that Chief Engineer Pack has brought to us in the past, as well as our investment in the expansion of our capacity from our jointly-owned Joint Water Commission supplies. The other thing that the budget has done, the financial plan reflects, is the direction that we got from our CEO to hold the line on operating expenditure. So largely, we're providing the same level of service that we have from the past and have held the line on operating expenditures. The RAC, as you will recall, did testify to you in January and had a recommendation that the district adopt two rate increases at once for each biennium that was consistent with the biennial budget. Couple reasons that they recommended that. One is to give more certainty to customers, that they can budget and know what their rates will be two years in a row. The second was to save money for the district in the process of going through the rate adjustments. But they had a couple of recommendations with that, and those recommendations included an enhanced outreach program. And so we really put our minds together on how to do that outreach in a more effective and comprehensive way, and I'll talk about that here. First of all, different from prior years, we actually have three open houses that we're going to propose for the public outreach process. We'll have two prior to the public hearing, and then one following the public hearing, so questions that come up in the public hearing can be addressed in the workshop. The idea behind the workshop is it'll be a less formal way that customers and citizens can come and ask their questions, and we can provide answers to those questions. So two open houses, one on a Wednesday evening, the other on a Saturday morning, to provide greater opportunity for people to participate. Then the public hearing actually would start, our proposal is to start that at your regular meeting in August. Would have a third open house on Tuesday, the 22nd, and that would be to answer questions for customers that might have come from the public hearing. We're actually suggesting that the public comment period be held open, so the public hearing that you have on, on August the 16th, the public comment period would be held open until the 25th of August, so that customers would have time to provide written comments to the district. And then the, would ask that the board take action on September 20th at your regular meeting in September. So a little bit later in the presentation, I'm actually going to ask that So, a little bit later in the presentation, I'm actually going to ask that you direct us to follow a plan like this by motion, so that we can do the necessary steps of notifying customers that this is the outreach approach that we'll be following. Now, I want to turn to the long-term financial plan and get into some of the details. And again, it's that second part. We've got our budget, that's set the priorities, that's provided as roadmap, and the financial plan then is what provides us the specifics of how we're going to fund those priorities and provides the basis for designing the water rates. So, the capital improvements that we presented in the budget process are presented here. We have the capital improvements for the WWSP, the Willant Water Supply Program, which really dominates the district's capital investment over the next 10 years. Our investment in the Joint Water Commission, which is the jointly-owned facility that we use to provide water to our customers, we're participating in the expansion there, as well as the critical industry, in district infrastructure investments. As you can see, the capital expenditure totals vary quite a bit by year. I'm presenting the same information here graphically to give you a sense of that. The blue shaded area is the Willant Water Supply Program capital expenditure, and it really does peak in about 2024. One of the ways that we're going to fund that investment is by issuing long-term debt. We'll issue revenue bonds to finance part of the Willant Water Supply Program. The financial plan that we have gets us to about $35 million of annual debt service by 2027. So, right now, when I said earlier that we have, we are in fact debt-free, this allows the district to write those agreements with bondholders in such a way that's most advantageous considering current market conditions. Key findings here, first of all, as you saw from the graphic, the WWSP really does dominate the district's capital investment in infrastructure over the coming years. The long-term debt strategy that we have continues to be refined, and it will be based on the WWSP needs and the timing and cost of those projects. Our annual debt service, we can expect to get about $35 million per year by 2027. The ultimate mix of long-term debt and cash that we fund this will depend on the district's capacity to issue debt. There are benefits of pushing capital expenditures out past 2027. That can reduce the amount that we borrow, because we'll have additional cash flow at that point to pay for projects directly with cash. And I can't emphasize this enough, there are risks to any 30-year forecast. A lot of things will change over the period of time, and I think it's important for us to understand that the information we present here are our best estimates, but they are subject to change as conditions change. I want to highlight just a few of those risks to the forecast, and again, I've presented this information to you at various forums before, so I'm not going to go through it in a lot of detail. But we continue to watch for cost increases from Portland. Mark Newsom just mentioned the cryptosporidium and the potential filtration. That will eventually affect our water rates, so we need to be caught in that. Because we're planning to borrow money, we're watching the debt markets very carefully. One of the important things for us is to look at the tax-exempt status of our debt. That can have a huge impact on the cost of financing our program. The timing of the WWSP projects are also very critical. And there are other concerns that we need to keep in mind. Economic downturns, changes in water demands for our customers, these are things that are very important. So, as we develop our forecasts, we do keep these risks in mind. But there are also opportunities, things that we can do to help us. First of all, the program is, is conducting value engineering and looking for abilities to do things in a more efficient and cost-effective way. They'll continue to do that. We do look for opportunities to save money in the program. We also could gain partners in the program that would help share the burden of the project as well. On the long-term debt side, there are new financing programs that are out there that we may be able to take advantage of in a limited way to help our customers save money. And there are, of course, other opportunities. Economic growth could pick up. There are other things that can happen within, within the economy. I just want to make the point that the forecast we have now is subject to both ups and downs. So, one of the things that we do look at in the financial plan is what are our cash reserves? So, presented here are our cash reserves that we're forecasting over time. You can see that as the WWSP projects and our CIP capital expenditures continue, we expect to draw down our fund balance, and we'll start to issue debt. The blue area that you see here is the money that we have available to invest in the capital expenditures and for our working capital. The hashed area here that you see actually is a reserve that we're expecting to hold as a debt service reserve, a typical way of meeting the requirements of issuing debt. I'm going to pose upon here these lines, which present what our targeted fund balances are, both for working capital as well as combined, including the debt service reserve requirements. As you can see, starting about 2026, we start to have a little bit of free cash flow, and that's why I indicated capital expenditures that we do past 2027 will be advantageous to keeping our rates as low as possible. So, coming back now to the rates that we are proposing. Again, following the RAC recommendation, we're proposing two rate adjustments. One, effective November 2017, that'd be this November, and one a year later. The current rates are presented here in 2017, 2018. The district has a block rate system, which means that we charge different rates for water with different levels of consumption. The goal of that is to reflect the cost of serving customers who have higher peaking demands in the summer months. So, the block one rate, we go from 406 to 461. The block one rate is for water that a single-family residential customer consumes up to 28 CCF in a two-month period or 14 CCF in a monthly period. For customers other than a single-family residential, it's 140% of their average annual 12-month moving average of their water demand. So, anything below that 140% is at that block one rate. Anything above that is at the higher block two rate. In addition to adjusting the volume charges, we're proposing adjustments to our fixed charges. And the fixed charges are designed to recover from customers the cost of providing that meter and service at their, at their residence or their business. And it varies by the size of the meter because our costs vary by the size of the meter. So, as you see here, these are the projections, the proposal for the two periods. I want to talk about the impacts on customers. I'm going to present this both graphically, and then I'll show a table that has the details broken out. But presented here is an impact on our typical single-family customer, which consumes about 7 CCF, a little bit over 5,000 gallons per month of water. As you can see, currently, that typical bill would be about $40.71. It's proposed to go up to $46.22. The gray area that you see here is the fixed charge. The blue area is the volume charge, the per CCF charge times that 7 CCF. Presented here is the same information in a tabular form, and you can see the monthly increase of $5.51 per month for the increase in 2017, and then a $6.22 percent, $6.22 increase in November of 2018. And this is, again, for that typical single-family customer consuming 7 CCF on a monthly basis. Now, most of our customers, we bill by monthly. We present the information here monthly because it's more comparable to the other bills that they pay most commonly on a monthly basis. Presented here is the impact on a above-average customer. So, this is a customer consuming 1,200, 12 CCF on a monthly basis would be an above-average customer. You can see the impact here of that customer, both on the fixed and the volume charges. And then we have a high-use customer that we also looked at. This customer actually gets into that block two consumption. This is a customer that has 28 CCF per month. That's about 21,000 gallons of water in a month for that customer. This presents the bill in graphic form, as well as the details here in tabular form. We also compared ourselves to other utilities in the community. We did this on an apples-to-apples basis by looking at that typical 7 CCF per month customer. You can see TVWD's current typical bill and the proposed typical bill that we have for our customers. And yes, as we continue to invest in the Willant Water Supply Program, TVWD's bills will continue to rise compared to other communities. So, we actually have a recommendation here. First, we recommend that the, that the district, excuse me, that the staff be directed to prepare a resolution for your consideration at the August board meeting, and that you set the date of the public hearing, the public comment period by motion. Once you've done that, then I'll kind of finish with the next steps.
August 16, 2017, and accept public comments received before 3:00, before 4:30 p.m. on August 25, 2017, to be included in the public record.
Aye, so moved.
And I second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Okay, it passes 5-0.
Thank you. With that, we'll actually take our next steps. Organ law requires that we mail, mail a notice to customers of the upcoming public hearing. Now that we have that date, we'll mail postcards to customers in the coming days. We will conduct the three open houses, as we talked about in the presentation. We'll have the, the public hearing then at 7:00 p.m. here at the district headquarters on August the 16th. We'll receive the public comment as directed through the 25th at 4:30 p.m., and we'll bring it to the board for action on September 20th. That concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Are there any questions for our esteemed financial director?
I have one comment. I remember when, for years and years and years, when the top of that rate comparison of other local jurisdictions table, Wilsonville was right at the top for many, many years. And now, they're down pleasantly.
Very good. Is there anything else?
Paul, will you let us know as commissioners if we're needed at any of those public meetings?
Yes.
Making sure that there's only two of us. But otherwise, if you want me somewhere, just point me in the direction.
I'll make sure that.
Great. We're coordinating that. Debbie's got the information on your availability, and we'll be making some assignments, because I think it would be entirely appropriate that we try to have two commissioners present at each of the open houses.
Right. For the folks who might be watching on television, we have to make very certain that there are not three commissioners together in one place, because that constitutes a quorum, and we're not allowed to have a quorum unless we have a notice. It's effectively a meeting. So, I'm sure that staff is working with us to make sure that we have representation there, but not too much representation there.
That's exactly right.
So, that's very good. Is there anything else tonight? Okay. Seeing no more business before the board, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.